Okay, this meeting is called to water. This is the February 8th meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. We'll get right into the agenda. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes. We do not have any. That's quick. Number three is to approve, to review and sign the bills. We have one from Graves Engineering for the 170 Hoppert Turnberg project, $2,351.50. And another one for 142 Clinton Street for $6,741.93. I gotta recuse myself. You say, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
In fact, we have motion second. Any further discussion? None. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Board member comments? Does anybody have any comments this evening?
No comments, yes.
Okay. Okay, staff report, Mr. McGoldrick.
So I have a brief one this evening. I just wanted to take a brief moment to mention on our planning board webpage, we have two surveys available currently for our bid feasibility studies. One is looking at the town center and one is looking at the Lakeway overlay district. So, business improvement district, what it is, it's a way of generating funding that's controlled by local businesses, separate from town funding, but in a form that they work to create that kind of environment. They set up the bid. This is a study to evaluate if that's a process that has enough support behind it from local businesses in those areas in order to create a viable business improvement district. Those surveys are out for businesses in those areas as well as residents who frequently visit those locations. So please, if you have a moment, go to our webpage. I believe we have some flyers out as well on the table for those who are attending in person to take that survey. We try to keep it as brief as possible, but we do want to collect some information and get some input, so it'll probably take about 10 to 15 minutes. We do appreciate people taking that. It really helps us guide those processes. So, other than that, I know I introduced the new assistant planner in our staff at the remote meeting that we had last week. So again, he's been working in the office very diligently, so we're happy to have him on board, getting him trained up on all of our local processes, and he's doing very well, so I'm looking forward to that continuing.
And you didn't scare him off yet today?
I have not scared him off yet, as far as I know.
Okay, is that all you have?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, board members, I'm gonna ask that we take item number seven, new business, out of order, so we can just go through those quickly and get them out of the way, and then we'll be dealing basically with hearings for the rest of the night. So, having said that, is this okay with everybody?
Sure.
So, Mr. McGoldrick, you gonna run through these, get a high level on it?
Yeah, so for new business, just touching on the updated fee and lieu calculation, so that's kind of an annual process that we do where we review median home sales. We have a set formula that develops our fee and lieu assessment. So we have updated those numbers with current figures from market and tax rates that we have in the community. We have filed those with the town clerk, but as customary, we do ask that the board vote to accept the new fee and lieu payments. So we have seen some increases in those. I'm happy to read those figures off if the board sees fit. So the median sale price, 2123, per the Board of Assessors for single-family homes, the three-year average is $614,344. The condominium three-year average is $411,335. So that translates price to affordable, price affordable to a qualified purchaser for a single-family home is $228,379. For a single-family home, for a condominium, that's $214,427. What that, again, we'll run that through the formula. That translates to our new fee and lieu for the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year, which is single-family home of $385,955 per unit, and condominium fee and lieu is $196,928. So just, that's the median price minus the maximum price. Other fees have remained the same, so the application fee for a special permit for granting a fee and lieu is the 500 base fee plus $200 per unit. We've left that level funded for this round.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? So, if somebody's building a community of, whatever, 55 and over, or whatever, and those houses are sold for $800,000, does that number change, or this is just the average and that's it?
It's the average. So these are the fee and lieu, so these would be triggered if a developer is creating a development and they want to have, rather than providing the actual affordable unit through deed restriction, they would pay this fee directly to the Affordable Housing Trust in that amount, but it does require a special permit grant from the planning board to review that.
But it, once we set these numbers, that's...
Correct, that'll be set for the year until they're updated next year.
The 55 is kind of a disaster, too, because the DHCD wasn't recognizing the affordable units for the purposes of affordable housing stock.
Yeah.
So people always come in looking for some sort of waiver.
Understood.
Okay, so, do you need a vote?
Yeah, I believe we just vote to adopt the new fee schedule.
To accept the new fees.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the updated fee and lieu schedule as just read by the town planner.
Second.
Second. We have motion second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Okay, Mr. McGoldrick.
So this is the, to discuss and vote on the bond release for the Oak Metal Farms subdivision. So the amount that was held is 1,500. That was held, the only remaining item that we were waiting on was the ASBILTS. The engineering department has received those ASBILTS and indicated that they are adequate, so.
I have a comment.
Okay. Do you have any abstentions?
Yep.
Okay, any questions, comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to release the bond for Oak Metal Farms subdivision.
Second.
Apparently we have motion second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Mr. McGoldrick.
Discuss the Centec Park post-occupancy sound study. I believe the...
Good evening, Chair. All board members, Devin Howell from Yields Associates. If the Chair would like, I have copies of the sound study that I could pass out to the board.
You're in the drive.
This is Centec North.
Yes.
I have a comment.
Guess we're all set for now.
Yeah, so the sound study was provided, so this is part of the nine-month requirement. The building is not yet fully leased, so the next sound study will come at full lease of the units. At that point, another six-month study would then be conducted evaluating those, so that's in line with the condition. I don't have the exact one referenced at the top of mind, but the sound study condition in the decision, so this satisfies that requirement.
Okay. So, the thing's not built out yet, so really, this is almost like an interim report, right?
Right.
We wouldn't ask the developer to do anything unless it was really bad.
Right, yeah, so there's no significant increases that are noticed on the sound study. If there were, you know, wildly drastic differences from what was presented, the board would have the authority to consider specific options within that, but I don't see that as a requirement at this point. And again, we'll get another bite at the apple if there is, you know, at the full tenant stage, so.
There was controversy years ago at the nearby Charles River Labs. Always coming from that, I remember that.
Yep, that comes up every once in a while, so. Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? Just FYI, that site is getting close to getting filled up. There's tenants for the big building and the other one on Route 20 is half full, so it's getting there. Okay, next item.
So, these are the proposed zoning articles. I'm gonna go through these at a very high level. I believe some of the draft language was provided to board members. We're still fine-tuning some of the language. We are targeting March, the March meeting for our official public hearings, but obviously I want to get it before the board members early, just to, you know, so you can start thinking about it. We'll also be posting this on our town webpage to allow the public due time to review those draft language and locations as well. So, the proposed zoning articles that we have targeting my town meeting, I'm gonna start with two of the more minor ones. We have digital signage, so the board will recall that we've passed with our town center bylaw, digital signage requirements. This will expand similar digital signage allowances across, or townwide, rather. We do have some updating of provisions and language to kind of modernize some of our signage bylaws, primarily allowing for digital signage. We do provide restrictions where, you know, one of the common questions is how often can it change? We do have a restriction that images will not change more than one, once per hour, which is a fairly restrictive requirement related to other communities, but we're comfortable with that, at least at this stage. The second change we're making is a farmer's market definition, so we currently have a fairly strict limitation on the ratio of vendors at the, at the farmer's market between craft sales and produce sales. We're adjusting that ratio to a, essentially a majority, a simple majority being vegetable sales, or, sorry, produce sales versus craft sales. So, we do, we have still updated the language around what crafts are, again, trying to avoid that flea market style kind of use, but still providing that flexibility for farmer's markets to allow a variety of vendors. Moving into the senior housing regulations, so this article will propose a new overlay district specifically related to senior housing villages. So we do have some provisions currently in the zoning bylaw that allows senior village and senior housing type developments in certain districts. This would be an additional overlay, providing some flexible standards in targeted locations for senior housing development. Again, some of the draft language has been provided. We're still finalizing the map around that as well as some of the language, so we'll have that. The language for that has been reviewed by town council and has comments back, which I believe have been forwarded to the board, and so we'll continue to adjust that as we move through the public hearing process as well.
Before we go on with that, and there's a lot in here, but I'd just like to draw your attention to a few items that still continue, well, we're trying to tweak them. Roadway length, which I know there's been concerns about in the past, it continues to be an issue because of the sites that are gonna be available after this, which are available now. You need long roads just to get into the site. So, there's some language in there to address it, you know, it probably will have to be changed. Also, we had in there language to allow the public access to the open space on the properties, but discovered that that could be an issue, that really, the intention was the path, if we have town trails, that was really what it was. So, if we, if we do allow that to happen, it should be by easement and describe where it is, because otherwise, the way it's written right now, people could be in here all day, couldn't do anything about it. That wasn't the intent. Dear, oh, size of the housing units. We had it as small as 400. I talked to some developers and they said, you know, fine, way too small. And they needed, they said they would need, because these senior housing, 55 and overs are not, well, they're retirement houses, I'd like to see what their original house was, because they're getting big. And if you count the seller, some of them are finished off like in Adam's Farm, if we don't up the number, you couldn't, you couldn't do some of those. So, doesn't really change the unit, just if they finish the seller. And there was a question on the, on the roadways, the drives, they're not public streets, but we want to hold to the standards of the public streets, except with the board's discretion, the radius and some other things could be changed a little bit from the typical subdivision requirements, because they usually low traffic and there's speed bumps on there anyway, so just something to consider.
And they own them.
Excuse me?
And they own them.
And they own them, right.
Well, fire department has to give their blessing, right?
They usually give their blessing on the length and the width. The width is, in here is 22 feet, that's the minimum, so that, at least we've got a standard on that now. And the last thing is, we're gonna have to have a discussion about where, how we're gonna approach this, these overlays, because there's some thought we should pick a few areas, or do we just want to put it over all the residential? So, just think about it, so. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but there's a lot of, there were a lot of typos and stuff like that, some, you know, 50 feet to 40 feet or whatever, so, but I just wanted to draw a list of your attention.
Do you think we should eliminate, or the intention being that this bylaw replaces any other reference to the senior housing in our existing bylaw? Because this is so comprehensive, and the one we did in 2002 was not really comprehensive.
Right, and then it's mostly governed by footnotes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if we were gonna do that, I think that would tie into the consideration of if we're doing targeted locations or more townwide. Even if we do targeted, we may want to just make sure that we're picking up existing developments under that, or similar, so.
Okay, anyone else, any questions, comments?
I have a comment more on the MBTA zoning part. I'm glad that the town is going ahead with this MBTA zoning. I know it's an option for some communities, but recently I attended state webinar, that mass one-stop, it's a agency where you can submit applications for grants, that encompasses about 13 different state agencies for grants funding. They made it very clear that if you are a community that fall into this MBTA zoning category, that if you don't, if you are not in compliance by certain date, that you are not going to be eligible for any of those funds. So, it's not like one or two funds, it's a lot of grants and funding, they will not be eligible, so I'm glad Shrewsbury is going ahead with this and pursuing it, you know, I like that idea. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll have a more comprehensive presentation on the MBTA zoning for our March meeting. To that point, that is one of the analysis that we did, and I think I presented, at least to the select board, if not this board, we did look at the discretionary grants that would be jeopardized, and currently we're utilizing over, or close to $5 million tied to grants that we would no longer be eligible for. So, that is a significant source of funding, and we have looked at that and, as well as other impacts to the community. I think what I've always said is that, you know, the $5 million that we're using there, a lot of those grants are a lot of times tied to, or open the doors to additional grant funding. You really kind of tie those together as you work through initiatives, and so without that funding source, we would have to pursue other avenues and certainly wouldn't be as effective at pursuing some of the initiatives that we do, so I definitely agree with that. So, the MBTA zoning communities, we've refined it, the language a little bit from the draft that was even provided to the board at this point, so I'll be sending that along shortly. We've actually selected, we've narrowed down to a single site that we think will comply with the location requirements and capacity requirements, so I'm happy to present that. So we're looking at generally around the Christmas Tree Shops location and some of the surrounding areas there. There's the Shrewsbury Commons multi-family development that's existing, so, again, as I had mentioned in some of those prior presentations, we were looking at where some of the existing density is and where opportunities for redevelopment are located. The other note there is it's actually very close to where one of the locations that North Borough is looking at in a similar fashion. They have three options that they're evaluating for their annual town meeting. Two of them are located next to that Christmas Tree Shops Plaza, so this would co, that location would coalesce with the initiatives that North Borough is taking. It's not directly abutting, but it's nearby, so it has that. And it certainly falls within the spirit of what I think the state was trying to achieve through the MBTA community. So, although it is the MBTA community zoning, we will be essentially rebranding it simply as, rather than calling it MBTA communities, we don't have an MBTA station, so that will be our transit-oriented development overlay district. So, but obviously, we'll make very clear that this is the 3A compliance zoning, and we will be evaluating an opportunity if we can pursue the 40R requirements as well. But again, I'll have a more comprehensive presentation on that for you at the March public hearing. I will be posting materials related to that to the town webpage as well in advance of that meeting, allowing the public advanced notice, so please check back at that webpage, subscribe, and we'll send that information out to the community. Again, the public hearing process will be open, so please bring your comments. We're, you know, very willing to engage with the public, and thank you for those who were taken the survey and engaged up to this point in our process in developing this draft. I think it's something that we're proud of. I think it meets the requirements and meets the spirit of the MBTA zoning, and I think it will hopefully spur some really good redevelopment projects in the community, so.
You have a question on the hearing, Mr. McGoldrick?
Sorry, yep.
Is that gonna be at the next meeting?
That'll be at the March, yeah. The legal notices are going out, or sent today, so going out next week, and then we'll have the hearing opened in March.
You might want a special.
A special meeting?
You mean like one?
What I was thinking, because you get, we're gonna have, we know we're gonna have at least Clinton Street, because we already know we're gonna do traffic, and I think that one's just traffic, and there's one or two of these that probably, well, they're probably gonna... And there's one or two of these that probably, well, they're probably gonna be continued to then, that could be a long night.
Yeah, so we'll have an informal, I don't have an exact date set yet, we're gonna have an informal community forum on that draft language, late February. And we're looking at that second to last week in February, so that'll be a good opportunity, hopefully, to engage with the public prior to the formal hearing. After the March, we certainly can have, you know, if we want to kind of open it preliminarily and then have a special meeting in March, that next week, we can certainly do something like that.
Good time to think of it.
Yep. That makes sense.
Anything else? Okay.
I'm out.
You're out.
Thank you. As I say, I'll see you in April, but maybe I'll see you at the special meeting in March.
I'll see you later than that. No, you can watch me on TV.
Why they call it a march?
Okay. Now, we're onto our public hearings. The first item we have is a, what? That's a meeting, that's not a hearing, right? First one. The sidewalk is a meeting, okay. So, we have a meeting scheduled for a proposed sidewalk extension request for de minimis change in Northbridge Partners on 384 South Street. Oh, you got double duty?
Double duty.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening again, Devin Howell from Beals Associates. Again, if the chair would like, I have copies of the plan that I can pass out.
Do you need them? I have it online, so I don't...
I have it right here.
Okay.
You don't have to stand, you can sit. What makes you more comfortable?
Sitting's perfectly fine. So, we're proposing a de minimis change for, it's about a 10-foot wide, or 10-foot-long sidewalk extension on the South Street building, which is commonly known as Building A throughout the original permit process. The construction managers, construction teams looking at adding glazing to that side of the building. There would be an addition, or a new door at that location into accommodate that door. We're proposing a 10-foot-long sidewalk extension to hit the building. That's the nature of this request, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, it's all for us, the rest of it's for the building inspector, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Need the vote to determine that this is de minimis change?
Correct.
That's pretty easy. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept this as a de minimis change for 384 South Street.
My second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. So, is that good?
Yeah, so...
If that voted to deem it a de minimis change, do we have to vote to say, we approve it?
No, it being approved as a de minimis, or being voted as de minimis, the determination.
Okay. Good. You're outside.
No triple duty, so, thanks.
Okay, next order of business is continued public hearing for a proposed self-storage facility, site plan modification at a Route 20 nominee trust located at 170 Hartford Turnpike.
So, we have received a continuance request for this application this evening.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
You have a motion to continue to, what, the date of the March meeting, Mr. McGovern?
Let me get the right one, just to be sure.
I got the right down. Okay. We have a motion to continue this hearing to March 7th.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, if there's none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. So, vote. Okay. Next order of business is a proposed building size reduction and site plan modification for Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, located at 440 Hartford Turnpike. Is there anybody here for that request?
Yes.
Just for the public's orientation, this is basically across the street from Tri-State Trucking on Route 20, near the cow wash that's down there.
You might need to join the Google meeting.
Yeah, I think we're...
All right.
You good?
Yep. 13 points, I can figure that out. Caught us a little off guard with the continuance there, sorry about that.
All right.
We could get started with introductions. My name is Gene Sullivan, I'm the civil engineer for the project. Haley Palazola is with us representing GFI Partners, the owners of the property. If you recall, we were here about a year ago and received our final approvals for a warehouse distribution building located at the corner of Route 20 and Stony Hill Road. We have since been fortunate enough to obtain a tenant that is gonna lease the entire building, and we're here tonight to make some changes to the approved plans that suit their needs for their business. So, that's the purpose of tonight, so we're here for a site plan modification and also a special permit to allow loading and unloading on the front of the building, which is now issued by the planning board as to previously we got approval from the zoning board.
Oh, right, okay. Excuse me just a second. We have that advertised?
Sorry, what?
We have that advertised as special permit? Just to make sure, but we can go ahead.
So, while I do that, I will explain to you what the changes are.
The reason you're asking for the special permit on the doors is because before you had to do it as a variance, right?
Correct.
And we changed the zoning.
Yes, we were issued as a variance prior to starting the planning board process, and then we, now that it's changed, we figured we'd get it all bundled up properly now that your bylaw is different.
Okay.
So, quickly running through what, sorry, I'm gonna, you wanna see? While I speak? The changes in the building, they're all positive and more have negative, we're coming in here now. Is that you, Chris?
Yeah.
All right. Go with that. So, the building size was originally 133,750 square feet, and it's been reduced to 121,200 square feet footprint-wise, so it got a little bit smaller in both directions, really, mostly depth-wise. We actually made it a little bit lon... Excuse me, made it a little longer, made it a little narrower, and actually were able to pull it a little further away from the residential homes behind us, from off of Stony Hill. We moved the building 20 feet further away from that property line, which we think is an improvement, obviously aesthetically and so forth. Additionally, we actually sunk, shrunk the building area and parking area inwards. We eliminated about 9,600 square feet of parking. Part of that is because our loading zones and so forth were reduced. We reduced from 23 loading docks originally, as we applied for, down to three doors for trucking activities, a drive-in door, and then two doors for compacters, one recycling and one ordinary waste. Those are big changes that we think are important for the neighborhood and all positive things, less runoff, less everything. Additionally, we reduced the height of the building by four feet. Originally, it was 36 feet clear, now it's down to 32 foot clear. And all of these were generated by how the tenant intends to use the property going forward. We have, since we filed with you, made some slight tweaks to our plan, meaning just exactly where some of the loading docks were located, we moved them over one bay just because of how interior manufacturing and warehousing flow would work. And additionally, we've added some second square, second floor square footage of about 17,000 square feet. The tenant for the building is Physique Instrument. They're gonna use this building, or utilize this as their US headquarters, so their corporate headquarters will be here, all their manufacturing, distribution operations will be all housed under one roof. They are a high-tech company that works with aerospace, pharmaceuticals, and semiconductor industries. They make some components that do really, really minute measuring and movements of parts, but I can only tell you that, I don't understand if you want to. And if you look at your website, you'll have no idea what they do. So, we...
How do I get to the plan again?
Just get through that.
And then I can share the screen this way?
All right. We're getting there.
We're getting there.
So, that's, those are the big changes. We wanted to walk you through them physically on the plan, show you what the building's gonna look like. We had shown a kind of a straightforward and generic, not generic, but what we anticipated the building would look like. Now, we have a real good idea of what it's gonna look like, and I think you'll be pleased with it. But just now that I, you can see my, is that me or Chris? Says it's me. On the left-hand side, you can see the great old parking area, that's our poor parking, that moved over about 30 feet, so our retaining walls got smaller. We didn't change any drainage, so there's just more grass area over there in simple terms. And again, on the bottom of the page, if you were to compare to the old plan, the bottom line of our building is another 20 feet further away from the residences over there, as well as the retaining wall and our impacts on that side. From there, I'll show you what the building's gonna look like from a couple of views and perspectives, and then we'll answer any questions that the board may have. It's probably important to note that we have filed also for an amended order of conditions with the Conservation Commission. We're going to see them on the 20th, I believe it is. We also had a pre-construction meeting on January 29th with all the department heads. We reviewed these couple of tweaks, meaning adding the second floor and that square footage. We've shown them and on our plans that we have adequate parking, more than adequate parking to meet the zoning requirements for that. We know we need an elevator, we know we need egress things, and really, all the comments from all departments were very positive, so it was exciting for me.
You might have to share a new screen, because it's not coming up there. So, if you could stop sharing down here.
Oh, wow. This is not going on.
What way to do it?
My mouse.
Where is it? So, now if you hit share screen?
Yeah, I can go back.
Okay. And then, entire screen. If you do window?
All right.
No, the window.
Sorry, we got to worry about it.
Chris, you need to... Okay. Yep, there you go.
All right. I apologize. So, what we have here is an aerial or a, as you're coming up Hartford Turnpike view of the building and parking lot, and it doesn't want to go in between, so we're gonna...
What if you hit a roller?
That was making it worse.
Okay.
So, my IT department took the day off.
Could you use the gray slider at the bottom?
I'm trying to, it's not liking it. So, you could see us coming up Route 20 here, and this is such a disservice, because these renderings look really cool.
Just leave it.
I'm going up one, I can't help it.
What if you change it there?
Try 50, it's too big.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right, that's it. Little too small.
We'll get a good shot of the golden ride.
Yeah. So, this is coming up, Stony Hill's on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, you can see it coming up the hill, all our office parking on the right-hand side over here. We've got a very limited loading dock, as opposed to previously, it was that whole facade basically facing Route 20, as we didn't know who our tenant would be at the time. So, we think it's an attractive building, we'll show you the next view of what it looks like, we'll hopefully be able to see it a little better. So, this is the loading side of the building. 50%. All right. And this is kind of looking at it from Stony, coming up Hartford Turnpike in the employee parking, the office parking. This is our front office, two-story lobby, some, you know, soffits and detailing over there, a lot of glass. It's supposed to look like a high-tech building, because that's the kind of company they are. So, it's architecturally a lot more pleasing and more attractive than what we had as a warehouse user. So, we think at the end of the day, it's a much better product or project, and we're really excited to have them. How come it looks good over there?
Doesn't matter. Looks good there.
So, it's not the same as what I have. So, that's what we're looking to do. As I said, we think all the changes are positive as far as the town concerned, less traffic, not as high, way less truck traffic, and I think it's a real good fit for the town and the location.
Okay. Questions from board members?
Just one comment on the trap, sorry, not traffic, the parking. You said, I mean, building shrunk, everything is smaller, and the parking is also going to be less, right?
No, there's gonna be the same number of employee cars.
Spaces?
Yeah, it just got condensed on the site. So, that field on the left-hand side is the same field, we just moved it over 30 feet.
But in terms of the number of spots, they are going to be still the same number, right?
We actually have more car parking than we did previously, because where we had loading docks, we have employee parking.
Oh, okay.
Because this is a lab as well, they're doing like manufacturing as opposed to just pure warehousing. So, they do have more employees, but not anywhere near the type of truck traffic. It's a half dozen trucks a day.
It will be their US headquarters, so there, we expect more employees and truck traffic here.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
I have a couple.
Okay.
So, we didn't, you didn't touch the erosion control?
Oh, the limit works...
Retention basin?
Correct.
Did you, somebody, did you walk with Chris at the building?
Yes, we did.
So, the erosion control's gotta get fixed a little bit, right? The straw waddles and stuff?
So, we have some, we put it down, are you talking, referring to the snow issue?
Yeah, yep.
So, when we first did them, there was five or six inches of snow at the time. Since it's melted, there's some areas we need to add some stakes or possibly double up, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the tree cutting in the back against the houses?
Yes.
I know you don't have a real lot of room, you got slope, but you're gonna be, you're not gonna clear cut all of those trees, are you?
There's a planted buffer between our erosion control and, you know, their property or their, what seems like their yard type of thing, that's, I don't know, 50 feet in places or something, I would say is about right. We're not touching any of that, obviously.
Yeah.
A lot of that back wall or back side will be, you know, kind of below us, so there'll be a retaining wall there, right? Because we're kind of, you know, the property slopes from left to right, if you're looking at it, we're meeting it in the middle, right? So, there's retaining walls on the yellow freight side coming around, you know, holding up the earth, and then they're, on the bottom side, they're actually, we're trying to build up to get up to our building plate.
Right. But any of those trees behind that section, south part of the building, if you can save any of them?
Well, we did do a walk, and, you know, the limit is what we need for stormwater and all of those things. We did ribbon off some trees to keep that were, what we told them as a rule of thumb, is anything within three, or within five feet of this on our side, keep it, and we'll reevaluate it later.
Okay. I guess my only other question is, what about lighting in the back of the building, exterior lighting?
So, we have wall packs on the back, okay, but they're really gonna be, they're gonna be on motions, we don't need them, they're really only there for emergencies for the fire department. We have a fire lane around back, and we do have a couple of egress doors out there, but those are emergency door egress only, and they'll have their own localized little can lights next to the door, so you can get out and see where you're going. But they're not intended to be on.
Okay. And they're already gonna go on motion, so they won't be on all night?
Right, correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. McGovern, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I think, yeah, just summarizing our site walk, I think we mentioned everything, so, but yeah, so we went out with the Conservation Agent. It's our typical kind of pre-site work walk, where we look at the limit of work and the erosion control. Typically, you know, what we do there is we try to see if there's anything, any vegetation that's really close to... that's really close to the limit of work where we might be able to just shift it slightly to save a significant tree. And reviewing it, certainly in this case, a lot of the grading goes right up to where the erosion control is, and so it's difficult to find anything that would remain viable. But, you know, the applicant, as they mentioned, agreed to evaluate within that five foot of the erosion control, which I think is, is above and beyond what, what we could ask for. So I applaud the applicant in that regard. So we're happy with that, and I think everything else was touched on, you know, just some slight settling of the erosion control that needed to happen, and I'm sure is underway, so.
Anybody else?
No.
I do have one more.
Sure.
You haven't had to do, because you're down, actually downsizing the project, you didn't have to touch your work on Route 20, right? Same work?
No, it's the same.
Just less trucks going in and out?
Correct.
Did you want to mention vegetation on the slope?
Oh, yeah. Okay. On the, if you can on the slope, could you, would you consider putting some plantings on the slope?
We talked about that when we did our site walk on the backside. And what I had recommended is let's get our wall built, let's see what it looks like, and we'll understand what or where would be appropriate.
Sure. If they could be evergreens, it would be.
Certainly, yeah.
That'd be great.
I think it's hard to tell now, certainly with the, everything's bare in the winter, and, you know, the wall's here or here kind of thing. So I think it's something we can evaluate maybe in the fall and understand better what, what would make sense over there. But we're open to that.
Anything we can do to help the neighbors here to screen it a little bit?
Completely understand.
I know it's a big building, and I could be able to screen it 100%, but anything that'll soften it a little bit would be good.
Yeah, I think it's softening the wall, really. I don't know that they're going to see the building very much, to be honest, because we're, where the homes are just situated, they're quite a bit lower than where we are.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this application?
Well, I wanted to...
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
No, you can talk, but can you go up to the mic and give us your name and address, please?
Yeah. Yeah. My name is Terry Condon. Mr. Donahue. I wanted to speak primarily on the next one that you're talking about. I didn't know that GFI was involved with this one also, and I'm familiar with the owner of GFI and had some comments there. But I was also here to talk about another matter, namely the runoff of my neighbor's water. The manager is familiar with it? There's...
Does that have anything to do with this?
Nothing.
So if it's, if it's not on the agenda, we can't speak on it?
Ah, okay. Then never mind.
What I recommend, if, if there's a matter that you'd like to bring to the town's attention, you can email it to...
I've done that already. You have all the information.
Terry.
The planning department?
I'll meet tomorrow.
Planning department has all the information.
Yeah. Give me a call, or I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Okay, tomorrow.
All right. So regarding this project and the next one you're going to talk about, just for dramatic reasons, this is eight years' worth of lawsuits against this guy trying to collect money for a job that I did with him. I recommend that anybody who's a contractor on this project get a permit or get a lien against it, which is legal, before you start, just to get paid.
Okay. That's a little out of the realm here, but... Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Then, do they have a motion close to hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Here being none, laws and papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, so voted. Do we have a draft decision?
We do not.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on, we'll have that next month?
Yeah.
All right. Are you staying for the next hearing?
I am not.
You're not? Well, Haley, you don't have to get out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this, Clinton Street, right? Okay, next hearing is a continuation of a public hearing for proposed warehouse facilities, site plan approval, and a special permit for stormwater and the aquifer. 160 Holden Street LLC, locations 142 Clinton Street. So, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton on behalf of the applicant, 160 Holden Street LLC. With me this evening to present this component of our public hearing process is Haley Palazola from GFI Partners and Doug Hartnett, who you met at our last meeting, from High Point Engineering. You will recall that we essentially bifurcated particular components for the review into each segment and had agreed at the last meeting that this meeting would be focused upon the site itself, the work being done on the site, its impact as far as abutting property, with a particular emphasis upon the stormwater design. As you'll hear in more detail from Mr. Hartnett, GFI Partners is quite proud for what it's been able to achieve with regard to points that have been raised as high concerns. You'll hear how we are greatly exceeding the requirements with regard to recharge and also taking significant steps for reduction in phosphorus loading, which Mr. Hartnett will describe in more detail. So his presentation's probably about 15 or 20 minutes to make sure that all the details are out and answer any questions before they're asked, and then we're glad to answer any questions.
Please start, just because I'll forget if I don't ask you. We had a couple of emails over the past month or so came into us. I think you were copied on them. There are two from a Mrs. Trotter with some questions, and it's a rather long one from David Gerber. Did, did you get copies of those?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So did we answer them, any of that yet?
The planning department has not provided a response at this time, but...
Okay.
Well, if I can, for Mr. Gerber's letter, we tried to cater tonight's presentation to address most, if not all, of his questions. I think we wanted the opportunity to present our topics at each meeting before we responded to them formally, but we did receive all the comments afterward.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Mark, Doug? Thank you. Again, for the record, Doug Hartnett, principal of High Point Engineering. Next slide, Haley. So we thought it would be good to do a little bit of housekeeping on schedules, to kind of where were we when we met with the board and where we're going over the next few months. So as we know, we filed the application on December 5th of last year. We had our community meeting on December 19th. We had our peer review received just before the first planning board meeting on the 29th of December. We had our first planning board meeting, obviously, last month, and as Mark had said, the decision made to split the reviews with tonight's meeting to focus on site and stormwater. We've been through the Graves review letter, the initial one. We actually had a video conference with Jeff Walsh at Graves. It was very productive, and we subsequently filed a response to comments and revised set of plans and stormwater report, and he is currently reviewing that. We did not expect a letter from him this evening and will continue to work through the comments that we would expect when next go-around. We've also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission that was done on February 5th. That application will be heard on the 20th immediately, so we look forward to seeing the commission and presenting the project to them. We have our second meeting tonight. GFI is working with their MIPA consultant and the rest of the project team. They had this as March 1st for a DEIR application, but it's likely going to be going to March 15th. And then we'll be subsequently filing our stormwater management permit application with the town as well. We wanted to get through Jeff Walsh's comments to wrap those up, and then we'd file that for that final permit. And then there's the off-site sewer extension project that's been ongoing discussions with the Department of Public Works and Engineering. Little context, some of these images, the board and the audience had seen at the last meeting, but can refresh everybody's memory. This is the entire, the original Worcester Sand and Stone property. It's really the existing conditions. This aerial was taken in 2023. On the right-hand side that you see in the red box, that's the subject of tonight's meeting. We just thought it was important to give context with the current Worcester Sand operation to the left. Clinton Streets at the top of the page, Holden Streets to the left of the page, and we'll get into the site plan specifics. So as we had, I believe we had talked to the board about, we had filed an approval that required plan with the engineering department in early, mid-January. That's received approval, and we'll be looking to make a filing to record that at the Registry of Deeds. The yellow outline you see is the approved A&amp;R boundary and is the current boundary for this particular project. So it gives you an understanding on, first of all, how degraded the site is today. If you, if you look at the plan, at the aerial, you'll see there's a roadway, a roadway, a pathway that extends left to right where it's significantly degraded to the plant, the west of which is planned north, and then it's vegetated plant south. Essentially, it's wetlands planned south of that pathway, and the ongoing filling and processing operation is planned north of that, of that pathway. This is the development plan superimposed on the same image that you saw previously. What it demonstrates is that the project itself falls predominantly within the previously disturbed area, as well as seeks to not disturb any of the existing bordering vegetated wetlands that exist within the property. We thought it was, again, important to give context of the, the goals of this project, not just for development, but to also improve a site that's been significantly degraded over the years, and I'm sure the community is looking forward to seeing improvements to be undertaken out of the property. This is a plan that the board reviewed at the last meeting. It's our zoning performance and layout plan. We've discussed on this already, but to just touch on those aspects of the design and the zoning-related matters regarding that. We have two buildings proposed. Can't read that far with my eyes, so I'll go to this. Building 100 to the left, 540,388 square feet. The building to the right, building 200, is 381,360 square feet. We have parking dedicated to the two buildings, as you see, to the plan north of the buildings. There's three access driveways. The access driveway left is the primary access driveway to the south side of building 100. The center driveway is the primary employee access driveway to get to the two parking fields that serve the buildings independently. And then the third access driveway is a dedicated truck access driveway to get to the truck court for building 200 to the north or right side of the page. Those two driveways circulate to the, what we call the interior courtyard, which is bifurcated by a landscape strip about 18 feet in width. That'll also include fencing and tree vegetation. In addition to the parking, one of the items that we're seeking a waiver or relief from, from the board, is to reduce the required parking as required under zoning. The proposed parking today under the plan is 524 spaces. The required parking is 653 spaces per the zoning. So the applicant's seeking about a 19.8% parking reduction, and the reason for that is it appears to make sense to address a couple of matters regarding the parking. First of all, the parking demand for the industry does not really match up with what the zoning requirements are in the off-street parking regulations. Secondly, the parking reduction helps serve the interests of the Aquifer Protection Overlay District to reduce impervious cover where you can, where you do not feel you need to construct it. So therefore, the applicant seeks the relief to reduce the parking. Additionally, on this plan, you see representation on sound walls. There's been a sound study performed by the applicant's consultant. You'll be hearing about that more in a future meeting with the board, but we felt it was important to point out the sound wall positions that provide sound attenuation to the closest residents to the north or plan right, to the closest residents to the south plan left, and also to the residents along Clinton Street, which is west and planned north. And so collectively, those sound walls provide this, the sound attenuation required by the project to comply with the Mass D E P standards. If you zoom out a little bit, Haley?
Sure.
Other aspects of the project, just to inform the planning board about the industrial, like limited industrial district versus the rural B district line to just demonstrate that the project falls solely within the limited industrial district. And to the left-hand side of, shown in gray, is the Shrewsbury Town Well parcel. So the green circle that you see is the current and existing 400-foot wellhead protection easement that the town has control of that extends onto the property. The two blue circles you see are future 400-foot Zone One wellhead protection areas to be provided, those areas that encroach onto the WSS property to be provided by easement by the applicant at a future date through another process with the town manager and Department of Public Works and Engineering. The green circle, while it does extend onto the property, it is the applicant's intent to seek a, an extinguishment of the easement, and we have been told by DPW that that well that was associated with that Zone One has been abandoned and capped and is no longer in operation. So it's really a technical paperwork item at this point. Next slide, Haley? It's a color site plan to give the board a sense on what we think, expect to see the property when you drive out there. It's, will be the buildings, the parking, as we saw, the, the loading, truck court areas, trailer storage areas, both on the extreme north and extreme south side. But we are significantly revegetating a lot of the disturbed area and the degraded area. Some of the items raised by Graves included making provisions for, if I can point to this, if you look at this, in this area, oh, you know what? It won't shine on the TV. Have to go from description then. On the truck court, where you see the S-turn in that area there on the left side, there was concern about headlights perhaps shining through the street trees that we had originally proposed in that area. So the landscape plan's been enhanced to provide additional vegetative screening in that area to further buffer those views from that area so that we do not impact the abutting residences. In addition to that, the sound wall that extends along that south-left side of the property provides additional visual screening from the truck court. As you go to the, along Clinton Street, that entire edge will be revegetated, so we're providing a good buffer screening from the front of the buildings. The, the forested area that circles the, oh, the wetland depression that's along the highway that provides really kind of a drainage basin for the Mass DOT, that tree area remains in place, so that buffer is, continues to be held and operates. And then on the right side, it was suggested that we provide some additional planting between the driveway, the right, the driveway north and the abutting property line to infill that area. It's a little sparse in terms of vegetation today, so the planting plan proposes to infill that with a mix of coniferous and deciduous trees. Other benefits regarding lighting, I've heard some lighting on the last hearing. So the lighting plan has been submitted. It's a mix of pole-mounted and wall pack-mounted lighting on the, mounted on the buildings. The lighting is dark sky compliant. The light, the light pole fixtures and the luminaires are designed so that there's house cutoff shields to the boundary line with... to the boundary line where the abutters are, and the photometric study demonstrate that there's zero light wash under the abutting properties. One other item we just would like to note, it's under the purview of the Conservation Commission, but there's some buffer restoration work that we're proposing. It would be between the buildings along the wetland edge at the east side of the retaining wall, and in a small infill area would be to the northeast or planned lower right. And that's an attempt or a mitigation strategy to improve areas that have been either existing degraded within the zero to thirty, no structure or zero to fifteen, no disturbed buffer zones under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. And so, we wanted to point that out. That's in addition to the plan that you did not see previously. Next slide, Haley. So, the stormwater management plan, this is obviously important to everybody here, the board and the audience, and we're excited to demonstrate to everybody that this project is, is a far significant improvement to what's been going out there today and that it's fully compliant and actually exceeds the standards that are, that are implemented by mass stormwater management policy, the Stormwater Handbook, and the Shrewsbury Town Stormwater Bylaw. The stormwater management system in itself has a number of components to it. We have a traditional drainage collection system, which is catch basins that extend to hydrodynamic separators in some areas, which provide total suspended solid removal of the runoff to improve the runoff quality. We have rain gardens that we're proposing in the adjacent patio areas where the building entries are. It's a low-impact development initiative. We have subsurface infiltration chambers within the shared truck court areas in the north side of building 200 to provide stormwater attenuation and infiltration. And we have three surface basins, detention infiltration basins, which is planned left or south, planned right or north, and planned south or east. And those basins collectively provide pretreatment and promote recharge to the underlying aquifer. All told, the project meets all the standards under the stormwater management policy, and I thought we would go into some of the more finer points of that detail. So, as I said, the project is required to comply with the stormwater standards, the handbook, and the town stormwater regulations. And in those, those regulations, best management practices or BMPs, I'm sure the board's heard that, they recommend strategies be implemented to collect control and infiltrate stormwater discharges. Because the site is within a Zone Two, which is also within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, the area, the site is designated a critical area, and so therefore the stormwater requirements are more stringent regarding water quality. So, they require you to basically provide two times the standard water quality volume pretreatment. So, instead of a half-an-inch of rainfall, you provide pretreatment for one inch of rainfall. The stormwater design decentralizes the recharge areas, so we get good recharge positioning throughout the project. What I mean by that is you don't have one huge basin and all the drainage dump into that like we used to do in the old days, and so we, this type of strategy helps promote that recharge throughout the footprint of the property. As we said, the low-impact development rain garden and patio areas are an improvement. They also provide nutrient uptake for phosphorus and nitrogen, and also are an aesthetically pleasing amenity to the outdoor experience for those people that are using the office and the patio areas. We know phosphorus is a concern for the board regarding Newton Pond. The project significantly reduces phosphorus loading, resulting in the improved water quality for Newton Pond as, you know, as it relates to this project's position within the larger Newton Pond watershed. And then for groundwater protection, the project design eliminates the existing untreated stormwater discharges from the current operations, eliminates the stormwater recharge that occurs with, that does not have pretreatment today. And the applicant, again, is working with the town to establish those wellhead protection areas that are not in place at this point. So collectively, from a groundwater protection perspective, this project is far and away, meets the minimum standards, and is a much greater improvement to what exists today. Next slide, please, Haley. Regarding the phosphorus, phosphorus is a natural element, but it's a nutrient, as we're all aware, that when introduced to water bodies in high concentrations can result in algal blooms and oxygen depletion that affects fisheries, affects wildlife. And so therefore, reducing phosphorus loading is an important issue to maintain healthy water bodies and support wildlife and recreational uses. People do not want to use the water bodies if they have a lot of algal blooms or a lot of weeds, and so therefore controlling phosphorus has become a much more prevalent practice as the mass DEP and the region have focused on looking for opportunities to reduce those phosphorus loading sources. The target, typical target phosphorus loading reductions are fifty to sixty percent of what your normal, we call the phosphorus loading would be for a particular project. We see that on most projects in a lot of municipalities. What makes this project site unique is the Newton Pond watershed, and the studies done under the total maximum daily loads of phosphorus for selected north, northern Blackstone Lakes. That was done in 2002. There was a big study done in this area, and they had actually assigned a total maximum daily load recommended for industrial commercial sites of approximately twenty-three kilograms per acre per year for an industrial site. So, so this is a, even a more stringent phosphorus loading target that this project seeks to comply with. So, from a mitigation perspective, the project provides significant phosphorus reduction through a number of ways, through the change in the land use type, through the implementation of vegetation. We have significant amount of infiltration through not just the roofs, but the, the ground pavement. And infiltration is really the most effective method of providing phosphorus reduction in stormwater. And then the rain gardens and the, and the ability for the rain gardens to take up phosphorus and the nutrients of phosphorus to assist in plant growth in those areas. So collectively, when we analyze all those different aspects, we see a real reduction in phosphorus loading that would be attributed to the project if this mitigation was not put in place. So, in summary, the estimated phosphorus loading prior to the mitigation is about thirty-eight point two kilograms per year. We apply all those best management practices to the phosphorus loading, and it knocks it down to six point four kilograms per year. So, the estimated reduction is about thirty-two kilograms per year, or about a seventy-two percent reduction over what is, what the project was actually discharging. And when you compare the six point four kilograms per year, per acre, to the twenty-three, you can see the difference. It's a factor of four almost. And so, we're, we're pleased that this project can bring that kind of benefit to Newton Pond, which we know, and we heard the testimony of the residents, is a concern for everybody in the area. The other aspects for aquifer protection, groundwater protection and surface water protection is recharge and water quality. So, we've done significant soil testing out on the property. It indicates that even though we see a lot of fill out there, the underlying soils are still native sands and gravels, which is why the Zone Two is, is laid out the way it is. It typically encompasses those type of, of soil geology. The typical criteria for the critical area designation is recharge minimum volume of point six inches of rainfall over impervious areas, and a water quality volume treatment of one inch of rainfall, as I stated previously, over those impervious areas. The best management practice mitigation strategies include surface and subsurface infiltration and retention basins, the rain gardens, and proprietary hydrodynamic separators. What I mean by that, those are what we refer to as Vortechnics units or contact units. They're essentially, it's a swirling device that in the, the Vortechnic action of the stormwater running through the device pulls the sediments down to the bottom of the chamber before it's released out of the changer, and that provides pretreatment. So, the, the benefit of the project, so the minimum required recharge volume is about eighty-six thousand cubic feet. The minimum water quality volume required excluding the roofs is sixty-seven thousand cubic feet. We exclude the roofs because roofs are considered clean for the purposes of recharge. So, the total combined volume minimum required for, to address both recharge and water quality is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand cubic feet. The system actually provides five hundred and eighteen thousand cubic feet, and that's a function of required, being required to provide peak rate of runoff attenuation and the positioning of those surface basins and the ability, because of the amount of fill in the property, to make those basins deeper to provide the additional recharge or water quality volume. So, in conclusion, the project provides about three point four times what the minimum requirement is for the water quality volume. And again, this provides a direct benefit, not just to the underlying aquifer, the pretreatment of, for the underlying aquifer for that recharge, but also for the surface water discharges from, from the stormwater basins themselves. Lastly, we'll talk about town water. There's been some negotiations with the town. It's been ongoing, some additional studies, which I thought's important to bring this up tonight. So, Shrewsbury Engineering and DPW had conducted some additional hydrant flow testing out of Clinton Street in front of the site to verify the actual flows and pressures within that system, and had found that actually the system has more significant flow and pressure to be provided to the project than we had probably originally anticipated. So, that data was provided to the applicant. The applicant asked their fire protection engineer, actually Gene was here before, helped us do it, and they found that the, the fire flow requirements for the buildings, the existing water provided by the town exceeds what the minimum water requirement is to provide fire protection for the buildings individually. So, engineering has made the determination that the water loop extension that we had presented to the board at the last meeting is no longer required. And so, at this point, the project does not propose to do the extension between Clinton Street and Sewell Street. It won't affect any of the wetland crossings that there were some concerns from the residents about. It would not affect digging up Sewell Street or any of the other private driveways in that area, and I think in the end, maybe give some people some peace of mind that there won't be invasive activities associated with the waterline extension. And the other item obviously is the town sewer extension. There's ongoing discussions with DPW and Engineering regarding the final design of that. We're working with them on that design on a separate pathway that supports the project. So. That covers the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board and the audience. Thank you. We may have a few. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Just a couple of questions, yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah.
I believe, if I remember right, in the last meeting, you indicated that you were going to file with MEPA for amending the environmental notification form. I guess you must have filed that, and did you get any determination from MEPA office on that?
I can answer that question. So, we have not filed the MEPA draft EIR yet, the Draft Environmental Impact Report. We, a huge piece of the impact report is the notice of intent filing. We pulled a stormwater management report from that. So, those things were just submitted earlier this month with the Conservation Commission. So, between that and kind of the ongoing changes with the utility connections, we held off filing the MEPA filing to risk having to go back and change it. And so, we will be filing March fifteenth is the new filing date.
So, that would be Draft Environmental Impact Report, right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, that, that kind of is a segue to my second question on that mass, again, considering that it is in the watershed, not watershed, wellhead protection areas, mass DEP will be looking at those in greater detail and part of this, as part of this MEPA process, they'll be making comments, and you'll end up addressing those comments. And we'll be, as part of the planning board, we'll be paying particular attention to those comments, so make sure you address those. My, my next question is, you indicated that you, you will be requesting for reduction in parking spaces, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which you are suggesting, at least the way I understood it, that, that would help improve the groundwater recharge area. In other words, I don't know if, if we, again, I'm not saying that it's going to be approved, but if, if that gets approved, we really want to make sure that you are really creating more pervious area of that thirteen or nineteen percent, I don't know what the percentage is, that you're going to be requesting, to make sure that in fact is not going to be another paved area used for something else instead, as you implied or as you suggested, that is going to increase the pervious area for water and improve the water quality.
I could address that.
Yeah.
Mr. Rouse. So, the positions of the parking that you would build if you complied with the bylaw, those spaces that we're seeking relief from will be graded if you, as if you wanted to build it, but there's nothing put on top of it other than grass.
Okay.
Essentially is what it is. So, again, the applicant seeks the relief if something came up and we had to come back to the board at a later date to seek permission to reuse those spaces. Project's been designed in a manner that the stormwater's already designed to account for it, and the layout of the grassed areas is such that you could construct it without being, tearing up more pavement, adding more drainage, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes. So, you had mentioned about like the Vortex units, and I might be getting a bit over my skis here, so just bear with me. But, the Vortex units are, is there, would there be a plan for ongoing maintenance? And if so, how often is that? And is there some type of reporting requirement, just knowing that it is in a more sensitive water protection area?
That's a great question, Ms. Holstrom. So, as we, not having just worked in Shrewsbury, but worked in other municipalities, the, the goal to enforce operation and maintenance of these stormwater systems is much more paramount to the towns. Fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, you would prepare an operation and maintenance plan, and it would go in the file, and somebody might not be looking at it. And, and towns have been enforcing applicants to provide periodic reporting. What, what the body is that receives that reporting, it's either the Conservation Commission, or it could be the Planning Board and Staff, it could be the Building Department. So, from an enforcement perspective, that's something that the board has, I think, latitude to be able to address, right? The, the actual operation and maintenance plan is a requirement from the stormwater management standards, and the operation and maintenance plan addresses all aspects of the drainage system, all best management practices, as well as housekeeping, street sweeping, trash removal, things along that line, anything that can actually result in any kind of degradation of the site or the environment. And so, the frequency of inspecting the Vortex or the CDS units, that's what we actually specified. In filtration basins, the subsurface basins, the catch basins, and so forth, it's all spelled out in the regulations. And so, the operation and maintenance report essentially mimics what the recommendations are from DEP. That's been filed in the stormwater report, and that's been going, undergoing review by Graves.
Okay. Thank you.
Who, just, do you know, who will be doing the maintenance of the Vortex?
Typically, when we build a project, there's a property manager that operates on behalf of the applicant, and one of the project, property manager's tasks is to maintain the stormwater system. They're provided what we call a BMP map, which shows all, identifies all the best management practices, that they're obligated to have a third party come in to inspect.
By the owner.
Yes.
Yes.
The owner's responsible.
Yeah. And they direct their property management team to execute that.
Thank you.
Okay. I got a few, a kind of stream of consciousness, so you're just gonna have to go with the flow. I understand you're gonna have a plan for the, for the, taking care of the water issues, but how often would the catch basins be cleaned? How often is the parking lot swept, especially in the winter?
So, going from memory, sweeping is usually once to twice a year in the spring. So going from memory, sweeping is usually once to twice a year in the spring after winter, right? Because we get sand deposition on the ground, so you want to sweep it in the spring. And in the fall, if, if you find that there's significant amount of accumulation of debris over the summer months. So sweeping is twice a year. Catch basins are typically four times a year. But usually what we'll do is every project site has a little bit of difference in terms of what the catch basin loading is. It all depends on where there's adjacent landscape areas. You start getting some, you know, you might get sediment runoff off those. So what we do is we inspect the catch basins. We do it for a year or so. We get an understanding on how those best management practices, how they fill up. And then we adjust the inspection frequency based upon that.
Would that be the same for sweeping, knowing that you would have significant amount of, of truck traffic coming in that could potentially generate more debris coming in and out? So that might need, you know, further just inspection, or you might need to up the consistency of sweeping?
Sure. I mean, right now, I believe the, the operation and maintenance plan calls for two times a year for the sweeping.
I'm not an water expert, but I remember when there was gonna be a wall put over there. And their sweeping schedule twenty years ago was more intense than that. I, I'd appreciate it if you could talk with the staff offline
Okay.
about how many times it should be done. Because that, that just doesn't seem enough for what we're trying to do. If it wasn't on the aquifer, I think it would be fine.
We'll reconsult the DEP regulations and discuss with staff if it's gonna be a more frequent schedule.
Okay. The retention basins, but they're in the rain gardens, they're gonna, gonna be designed to kind of help filter the water. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. It's gonna be kind of funny I say this, but it's kind of getting into weeds. But what, what kind of plants do you put in? I know what a rain garden is. We bought one out here. I can't see that thing being, but they have in there be adequate for that, for what you're doing. So it's just not designed for that. But what, what kind of plants and plantings do you do in those basins to get the natural filtration from the plants?
So for the rain gardens, there's certain plants that are suggested that would thrive in an environment that gets periodic inundation. So you don't want to put a plant that's not tolerant of having water introduced to it occasionally, right? So there's a plant materials list that's recommended by DEP. We can get that on the next meeting. So I believe we had some plant materials, but we can provide that.
More informational for just.
I mean, I'm not a landscape design expert. Oftentimes what we do is we get into the real details of the rain garden designs. They'll selectively pick the plants, it's a mix of ground covers, maybe some flowering plants, maybe a small tree or two to give it a, I call it kind of a successional feel to it, so it doesn't look like it's all ground cover and a ditch, right? We want it to look nice and fit into the surrounding landscape.
I know people are concerned about what they look like. A little bit more concerned about how good it works. Don't care what it looks like. On the soil contamination that you, you talked about, you dug some pits to check the soils. I'm just curious, how deep did you, as you were digging down, how deep did you have to go to get it to clean?
Well, we did a mix of test pits and borings. So we dug test pits down to fifteen feet. Some of those test pits up toward Clinton Street, we never got through the fill. But we did have borings done for, when we were looking at another building layout that we were considering. And those borings got down eventually to sand material in most of those areas. Depths were, could be forty feet before they hit the sand. You get toward the back where you have less fill, we were able to achieve the location of the sands and gravels within ten feet, five, ten feet.
But you're comfortable that you know where any contamination is on the site?
Well, there's no indication there's contamination. There's fill. We.
Well, there's a lot of fill, that's why.
Right.
I just.
Right.
I think a lot of people in town are concerned about that, about, not about you, about what got dumped in there.
Yeah.
I know it wasn't, well, shouldn't have been hazardous waste, but obviously it's an issue because it's so close. And I recognize that we are doing, is it gonna do more to keep that water clean than what's there now? So I think it'll be a big step forward. Want to clarify on that water pipe, water line? That line is the line you're talking about that the town was gonna put in that they don't need, right? Okay. Two more questions, and then if anybody else has questions, then we'll open it up to the public. Where do you, where do you have the snow storage on that site?
We have it intermingled along, I don't know if it's on the plan or not, it might be on the plan set. But we usually place it at the head of the parking stalls in the parking fields. Like you see the green space
You're right.
on the north end of the parking fields. Those areas are designated for snow storage, especially in the, the parking, call it the waiver parking areas. We usually put snow storage at the trailer storage areas are as well. That we see on the right-hand side, the left-hand side of the plan, is typically managed by the tenant and the landlord in terms of putting snow storage in those zones and along the edges of the driveways as you would come in and out of the property.
If they're gonna use, if they're gonna use areas where the trailers are, in the winter, they're gonna use less, they're gonna have, they're not, they're gonna have to have less trailers, right?
Well, it's a, it's a management aspect of what the tenant.
Yeah, but they don't control how much snow we get. When the snow gets pushed wherever you got the snow storage areas, that's gonna be picking up whatever is in the parking lot. Is that, as we get the melting, does that water get infiltrated into the system, or is it outside the system? Do you know what I mean?
That's a great question, Mr. DePaul. So we try to have, I say try, we design it so that the storm, the snow drains and melts so that the offflow goes down gradient to the drainage system. That's typically what we do. So you don't want to put snow in wetlands. We know that, obviously. And so we try, place it in the locations where it will melt and drain into the drainage system, and then it gets treated in those.
So we'll get into the system.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's typically.
Just one more question. Did you say there was a sound barrier on, about what I'm looking at, on the, on the, the left-hand side towards the houses?
Yes.
Where you got that jog? There is a sound barrier there?
Yes.
Right here.
Okay.
That's what you see in red there.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Probably got some other stuff. We'll come back. Anybody else have any questions? No?
No.
Mr. McGoover, do you have anything right now?
Nope, I think it's fine for him.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and if you'd like to make comments on this, you're welcome to. I'd ask you to keep your questions to what we did tonight. So the site plan, the groundwater, any of the water issues. Next week will be tra, uh, next week, next month will be traffic. And so that's when all the traffic questions should be asked. And then we've got another round after that. So we're trying to break this down so it's a little more manageable for everybody. So if you could just keep your comments and questions to what was presented tonight broadly, they might, they might have missed something that you want to hear about related to these. But if we could keep it, the site plan and the aquifer issues. Okay. So. Anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. Could you?
My name's Jerry McQueeney. I'm at one fifteen Sewell Street.
Okay.
I heard what you said, but they mentioned something about not tearing up the road for the water. And they did briefly mention sorge. As part of the project to connect sorge and water, would any of that potentially be part of the local residents to have their sorge put in? Because the sorge in our part of town was, was rumored to be coming in when the high school was built, when it came down Gulf Street, and it never was. Put into the end of Sewell Street where we are, right at Newton Pond. So I was curious if, as part of this project, if they were gonna be extending water and sorb to the, the warehouse, which is right across the pond from me. My view is I'm on the hill right across from Newton Pond, looking right, looking right on the back of this warehouse. We, we don't have sorge. So in terms of the aquifer, we all have septic systems. And we, I mean, we've always wanted, I'm waiting to do my driveway until the septic comes down because I don't want to have to replace it twice. That's my thought.
I'd try to answer that. That would be something that the town's gonna do. They, they wouldn't be doing that. It's a little more complicated than just saying they're gonna extend it because we're limited on, I'm sure you heard this before. We're limited on how much flow we can send to Westboro. And they were, what they call needs areas. And then there was an issue with capacity of that pump station over there. I believe the pump station that would handle that is gonna be upgraded in this project, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's in the context of the aquifer.
Yeah, I know. Are you doing any work on the pump station? Or are we doing any work on the pump? There's something going on there.
The responsibility and the methodology of running the sewer is the subject of fairly active discussions with DPW.
Okay.
And determination of what the private party's going to do and what, if anything, the town's going to do.
Right.
And, you know, we, we will hope to reach that at some point, some closure, and then we'll be able to answer the question better.
I'm pretty sure that something's gonna happen to that pump station over by Main and Holden Street. So we can ask and get back to you on that. I can't, I can't tell you a timeframe. DPW might know when, when they would be expecting to extend the sewer. But I would imagine it definitely wouldn't happen before that pump station gets worked on.
Thank you for taking my question.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Scott, no. One twenty Bosworth Road, pardon me. As part of the MIPA process that was done in 2022, there were water studies done. Are new studies being done now? I ask because initially the study was done after a long period of drought. And we haven't had a period of drought in the last year.
I'm sorry, I'm just not sure what you mean by water study.
Water studies were done on both parcels A and B to show the amount of recharge coming from both parcels.
Do you know about that?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm gonna speak for the DPW in some manner, just from my understanding of the history. So Department of Public Works made a determination that there needed to be a replacement of municipal water in Holden Street and Clinton Street, and that was extended up in front of the project site to the Boylston Town Line, right? And at that time, they had done studies to see, okay, what is the demand going to be in order to allow us to size the water line? And so therefore, that's how they ended up coming up with the sizing of it. And then we subsequently did the testing with them to determine that it has adequate capacity. I, I'm not sure if that's the gentleman's question, but that's all I know about that aspect of the.
Yeah, I think he's asking.
Sir, are you asking about like from a stormwater perspective in terms of?
Groundwater recharge, right?
Yeah.
On both parcels A and B.
So to answer your question about, we did the presentation on the groundwater recharge benefits of the project. The project provides about three and a half inches of total rainfall volume that's directly put into the ground before anything actually overflows, which is much greater than what occurs today. So that's for our site. The Site B site has been tabled. There's no more studies being done on that. The applicant has chosen to focus on one forty-two Clinton Street and proceed forward on that. So we don't have any more information on the other property as you referred to, sort of Site B.
Yeah, what I read was the report that was done for one forty-eight Clinton.
Which is now one forty-two. The town gave us an official address of one forty-two.
One liter of fuel oil can contaminate a million liters of water. I don't know about you, but I've never walked across a rain-swept parking lot without seeing oil and fuel rainbows. Will this system remove all of that?
To answer your question, sir, yes, it will. And it's accomplished by a number of factors. Catch basins are designed what we call oil and gas hoods. The hoods are put on the outlets of the pipes of those structures. Because we know that oils and gases float on top of the water. Those hoods are put in to keep the, those, those fluids from getting through the catch basin into the system. And then when the catch basins are cleaned, that material's taken out of the catch basins and disposed of as required by law. The, the rain gardens, actually, there's no oils going in the rain gardens. But for the infiltration basins, we have sediment four bays that are lined. Those sediment four bays provide collection and holding of any oils that are coming off the parking lots. And then the hydrodynamic separators that we spoke about also provide retention and capture of any oils and grease that'll be on top of the pavement if it gets washed off due to rainfall. So collectively, all those best management practices provide what I think you're concerned about, and that is removing all that, any laden oil, oil, gas, what have you, that's laden on the asphalt.
Okay. You know, once an aquifer is polluted, it's unusable for decades or even centuries. Is GFI confident enough in their ability to keep that aquifer pure and drinkable that you had set up an escrow account to handle the expense of the town having to go to the MWRA if the aquifer is affected? MWRA water.
I'm not gonna speak for them, but knowing what I know about our water system, unless if it was something that they definitely caused, they would be liable to address it.
Where would the town be?
Well, so you know, we had to build a water plant because we were getting infiltration of stuff coming down from like around Damesbury and that, right?
Yep.
We couldn't definitively prove where that was coming from. But the town did sue those businesses, and we got a settlement from them. I think this is, that's a really technical question. It's gonna depend on what actually happens. And it's gonna be determined who is actually responsible. But if, without, without them having to say it, if they caused it, if they brought a, a fuel truck on there, then the gasoline all went into the system, you're responsible to clean it.
Well, that's it. You know, you don't know who the tenants are gonna be. You don't know what will be stored in those warehouses.
They'd still be responsible for it.
GFI or the tenants?
They own the property, so one way or another, yes.
And they're going to own the property in perpetuity?
No, but whoever owns it is gonna, is gonna be responsible for the prop, just like anyplace else. If a gas station leaks, doesn't make any difference who owns it, they gotta fix it. If somebody sells it ten years later and there's a leak, they still gotta fix it.
Well.
I understand your concern. But if they're, if anybody is found liable of, of pollution, doesn't have to be just near the aquifer, they, they're responsible to clean it up.
MWRA water is different than ours.
Right.
It would not be compatible with our infrastructure. So if the town did have to go to MWRA, the expense would be astronomical.
Yep, you're correct, because we looked into it. Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Well, Terry, please. Well, Terry, please. No, wait, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Krista Dupre, Candlewood Way, town meeting member, precinct one as well. I just wanted to verify a couple points of the project that were brought up tonight. In regards to the screening and the S curve in coming in, and I'm only bringing this up because of what was talked about, especially because of snow, as well as the screening that was in the Graves report, why is there that S curve?
Oh, I can answer that.
Thank you.
So the S curve is there to allow trucks to be able to pass one another without conflict. So a truck is coming in to get to the control gate, and a truck might be leaving the control gate, and there could be times when those trucks pass each other on the driveway. So first of all, the curb cut position is dictated by Mass Highway, and it's positioned with respect to the other curb cuts that we have and the old Clinton Street intersection across the street. So it's important to align that. So that drives that. And then the trucks come in, and they make a turn, and they make a turn. So you have more than widened radiuses because of the fact that the trucks will be passing each other. So that's why the layout is the way it is.
Okay. And what, for example, I'm just curious of a speed in this type of facility, since I am not aware of what a speed limit would be. Like, how fast would these trucks be going? Because even at the bottom, to me, the bottom, of how fast around a facility would they be driving in this type of road? I don't know if you call it a road or not.
It's a driveway. It's not a road, first of all. Second of all, typically, they have, in order to be able to make the turn into the property, first of all, they're almost at a stop. They're probably at 10 miles per hour, five or 10 miles per hour, before they make that turn. You have to remember, these trucks are oftentimes coming in with a full load, so they're not driving fast for obvious reasons to take that turn. And as they come into the site, they're not going fast because they know they're gonna be doing the S turn. So if their speed is greater than 10 miles per hour, I'd be surprised. The other driveway, perhaps a little bit faster because they're going downhill, but the reality is they all have to stop to be able to make the right-hand turn and get into the property.
Okay. In regards to the soil testing, could you just remind us how many different sites there were across this entire numerous acres of property?
I mean, test pits?
Yes.
We did 12 to 15. And I think there were 12 or so borings, nine to 12 borings. So all in, 20 to 25. I don't have the exact number. You can provide that. And we're actually beginning to be doing more testing as it was recommended by Graves. We are exploring getting into those areas where we know we can get down with an excavator to be able to get down to verify the soils and the footprints of the basins. And we're working with them on that. So what happens is, as we do additional testing, if we find that the height, the site elevation is too high to get a test pit footprint exactly within the footprint of the stormwater system, we would, when they're in construction, have Graves come out and look at these areas once we dig down deep enough to be able to stage that. So it's not uncommon to have projects of this caliber where you have a lot of fill soils, a lot of cuts fills. You need to go back out there and continue to confirm everything as you get into construction.
Because this entire project is raised. Is that correct? If I'm understanding you correctly? Just, and I'm only asking this because of that comment.
As it relates to the street, no. As it relates to the wetlands, yes.
Okay. And how about the residents?
If you were looking at the site plan to the left-hand side, we're actually a little bit depressed where the S curve is. We're lower. But as you get toward the first truck court there on the left side, we're higher than the residents. And as you go around the back, we're higher. And as you keep going around the back, we're higher. And as you get away from that truck court, we start getting to be lower because the right-hand side of the plan, the residents are higher in elevation. And then, so you see the black line that looks like a C. That's actually a retaining wall that retains the higher elevation to the right-hand side. And the black line you see that looks like, I don't know what that would be, J, that's actually a retaining wall because the driveway is higher than the parking lot. So it's, because when you go out to Clinton Street, it may not look like it, but there's actually a significant amount of grade change along the road.
I drive it daily.
Yeah, so you know what I mean.
I know it.
You get down to, so you're at the low spot near the center driveway, and it rises in two directions on both going north and south. So it has some grading intricacies to it, which we've been able to address. That's generally how the site relates topographically to the neighbors.
So that, and is there one entrance in, two exit out, if I'm understanding it correctly, or no?
No. So starting from left to right, the left driveway is dedicated to trucks only, both in and out for Building 100. The center driveway is dedicated to employees and visitors only. That's both in and out. The right driveway is dedicated to trucks only, and that is both in and out. And that's for the benefit of Building 200.
Okay. Thank you. That will help for traffic next time. And on the right-hand side, you said that driveway is raised, and there's gonna be additional screening for the residents. I believe that abuts Boylston, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So you can see in the plan, we're maintaining the mature vegetation along the lot line where we can, but we're taking down the home that GFI owns. It's actually, you can actually see, if I just stand up here, it's gonna be easier to explain it. Right in here, that's the driveway for that home today. And the home gets taken down, it gets open, right? So we wanted to infill that to protect that neighbor. And we have some grades. So this is actually lower than the neighbor, so we graded this up as you go. And then this is lower than this. So it's kind of tiers. This is low.
Sure.
This is medium. This is high.
And just to touch on that again, because it was brought up tonight, I know tonight's definitely more about water. But in regards to the sound barriers, I do not see, but I could have missed it, to me, the bottom of the warehouses, so not 70, but towards Sewell, are there any sound barriers projected in this project for that part of the property?
There aren't. The sound analysis and sound study demonstrates that there's not an exceedance of decibel levels higher than what the Mass DEP requirement is for that east side going towards Sewell.
Okay.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Dupre. Can you add something to that?
I'll add in terms of the sound study. So we have selected a sound study peer review consultant as well that'll be reviewing that sound study. We're also going to ask that they take a narrow view in terms of the infrastructure for noise reduction that has been proposed to see if that is adequate or if there's additional mitigation measures that the board may consider. So that, we're targeting to be done, not at the traffic, but the following meeting to review that or have that peer review in hand as well.
So I will share where my street is and beyond, and I'm sure many other people can speak to this in the neighborhood, is that sound carries just from the gravel pit now. So I can only imagine hundreds of trucks coming in 24/7 potentially, which I understand. Has a tenant been secured?
No.
At this time? Okay.
Mr. Dupre, could we see if anybody else wants to ask any questions? Because I think you've got a few more, right? Could you, could you...
I can't hear you, please.
Could you stop for a second, and then come back up?
Sure.
Unless you've got one left, just one last one?
I guess my final statement is, we don't want this project. We don't. I voted this down at town meeting to rezone this area. This is not a project. I would have loved to have heard this was scaled down, just like the other project you mentioned tonight, and had a world-class building for our headquarters built up there. Great. But not hearing it scaled down coming in tonight, that's a major concern. Scale it back. The parking doesn't even fit now, and a variance is needed. And I'm sure there's gonna be other variances needed as well. Project's too big, too much of an environmental, residential, and pollution impact. Thank you.
No, 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 no. Look, we just keep these things civil and quiet and respectful. No applauding, no, nothing. Just let's keep it to this, please.
I'm a resident of South Shrewsbury, and I'm here tonight because...
Could you state your name, please, in your...
Yeah, my name is Fran Regan. I live on Stoneland Road. Doesn't matter. I live near the Politos. My opinion is that this town is too development-friendly, and maybe it's because of the Politos, being the Republicans, and to make that generalization...
Excuse me. This has nothing to do with the Politos? This has nothing to do with the Politos?
You had a chance to talk. Can I talk, please?
No, I'm gonna interrupt you because I'm not gonna let you start dragging people through. You keep it to this. Politos don't own this. They have nothing to do with it.
I understand. I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
But the reason why I bring up their name, I live in South Shrewsbury. You can see what they're doing on Route 20. They're stripping the topsoil. Anyway, my concern here, pre-pandemic, there was a meeting at Oak Middle School, Oak Street Middle School. You were probably there. It was the contamination of a well, and you mentioned Jamesbury Corporation. By the way, if you got a settlement from them, why don't you disperse it to the residents of the town?
We did. We put it...
Instead of raising our real estate taxes.
We put it into the plant.
Okay, thank you. I went up to the town manager, and the other thing is if this, this is probably already a done deal because you've got a lot of money at stake. A lot of money's already been put down. When the town manager comes into work every day, have him drink tap water out of the Shrewsbury water system. Can I make that request? That guy lives in Stirbridge. He probably comes to work with a bottle of water, okay? And the biggest thing in this town is the ash dump. I'm sorry, I gotta mention that. The biggest elephant that this town hasn't dealt with is the ash dump, which is now renamed Wind Industries. The reason why I'm mentioning all this is I oppose this project because of its proximity to an aquifer. And I heard it from the town manager at that meeting at pre-pandemic. I went up to him after the meeting. I said, excuse me, Mr. Mizikar, but I was involved with a videotaping project. I had the green light to the ash dump. I have videotaped footage of a compromised membrane. And you know what he said to me? He goes, oh, well, the groundwater in Shrewsbury, there's a study been done that it runs from north to south. So this project is going to affect all the residents of Shrewsbury in terms of the aquifer. And when I heard that out of his mouth, I sent an email to the town of Grafton. And I said, the ash dump is on the border with Grafton. There should be a concern for groundwater, you know, traveling north to south. So I'm here tonight to voice my opposition because of the proximity to the aquifer. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, did you... Ma'am?
I've got a quickie.
Sure.
This is an amazing plan. Gretchen Nolan, Bosworth Road. Amazing. Just, so I wanna know, who's your geologist? Hydro... What's the word? Hydrogeologist. Who did this? The hydrogeologist?
Well, the design, I'm a civil engineer.
I know, but who's the hydrogeologist? Because that's who should be working on this. Somebody who is into aquifers. That's my question.
Little to no issue as to the location of the aquifer. It's acknowledged. The site is in the aquifer district. And what has been done is a design, as explained here, for the impervious area being created and the restoration of the site to manage the stormwater in a method that exceeds best management practices and achieves reduction of the concerns to the aquifer, together with a system that captures all of the impervious area and calls for treatment of that regardless of the conditions. That's the study that's appropriate once the aquifer area is known. High Point Engineering has undertaken all of the work in anticipation, expectation, and understanding that the aquifer is there.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Linda Heller, and I'm just reading from the master plan from 2016, which stated that the northwest corner over the town's aquifer, that the town can implement groundwater protection and conservation efforts, and the property could be used for paths of recreation. And how did we get here? Just seems impossible. This is the town plan, which should still be in effect 10 years, it said.
Anyone else? Mr. Collins, did you? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Paula Tebow, 121 Clinton Street. And I just had a clarifying question about the vegetation, because I did see in the Graves report about the lights. And I understand the S curve, but not sure about the properties that are on the west side. So directly where the cars will be going in and out. For year-round protection, I believe that that was kind of more of the issue than just in the summer when the trees are pretty.
So I'll speak to, as I've said before, on the landscape design. We have supplemented the entire corridor between the center driveway and the right driveway with new tree vegetation and understory. The vegetation that exists today, the large tree stand next to the ditch, remains unchanged. So that provides a screen from Building 100. The new screening we're providing along Route 70 provides a screening for Building 200 and its parking. We're maintaining the vegetation where the S curve is, and you can see the limit of work is in light green, but you can see the trees in the aerial image in that little corner to the upper left. That remains in place. So those trees and the screening that those trees provide remains in place.
So the, I'm sorry, the ditch area between the west side Clinton Street facing directly the parking lots? It's, I mean, when it's winter and all the leaves are gone, you can see straight through. So with the lights coming in and out of the driveway, I don't understand how that would be protected if, when there's no leaves.
Well, as with any driveway, you would have lights, you know, at nighttime, obviously. Will there be employees working that kind of volume at night? Hard to say, given what the occupancy would be of the building. I'm not sure if we could actually propose to do something across the street because that's Mass Highway land. It's not land owned by the applicant, so...
Okay. And then I just, also a clarifying question, which maybe can be addressed at the sound meeting, but the sound barrier also between that section and the neighbors that are on that other side of Clinton Street? And what types of sound protection there's going to be for the residents there?
You mean on the other side of Clinton Street?
Yeah, because even kind of what Krista said, I can hear people talking if they're in the gravel pit in my, where my house is, right across the street. So I was just curious if there's sound protection there for the residents on that side.
So the, as you said, we said the trees will provide some method of sound attenuation. I can't say about a person's voice in the gravel pit, given where you are. I will say that the sound barriers that we're providing at the truck court are intended to be able to provide that sound attenuation as it relates to the truck traffic. So now we're only talking about the vehicular traffic, which is consistent with vehicles that drive up and down Route 70 all day and all night. So just in my opinion, we've done what we think is appropriate, and that the sound study demonstrates that it meets the requirements under DDP.
I guess they'll be interested in the town study then. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Terry Condon, ladies and gentlemen. My only comment here is, sound seems to go up. So everything is down low, carries noise up. Now, I live on North Street, and that whole area is like an amphitheater. I can hear Route 290 trucks going up and down there. You add another 350 trucks a day, and it's gonna be serious noise that I hear.
You add another 350 trucks a day, and it's going to be serious noise that I hear, never mind the people around it. So I don't know what kind of sound attenuation they're going to do that would mitigate all of the problems around it and the people. And just to add to the man who mentioned something about contamination, where who's responsible, the person who owns it or the person who doesn't, where you can lawyer after them, which is commendable, you went after them before. Jamesbury knocked down a bunch of buildings, and that land was never cleaned up, and they put in Polar Park. So the idea that someone is responsible forever seems to me to be a bit of a stretch. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm not even going to go there. All right. Yes, sir.
Bill Manter. Greetings from Boylston, 178 Main Street, Route 70. A few questions. The zoning is now limited industrial? Okay. As per the previous public hearing, where a office complex was found, is office complexes allowed use in limited industrial?
I can check. I believe it is by special permit, but I can double check one second.
And I might as well start with the second one.
Sure.
What are the estimated job numbers on this type of intensive job type of warehouse of sorting?
Can you raise that?
Yeah, we estimated about approximately 500 jobs based on the fiscal impact analysis that we did.
Within both buildings?
Correct.
And I am to assume that these are probably closer to the federal minimum wage than they are to highly-paid salary positions?
I don't know without the tenant.
They don't have a tenant yet.
I know, okay. Well, this leads me to two things. First of all, has there been any discussion with the M W, no, excuse me, W R T A as to extending bus service to this area?
Yes. We've had two meetings with the M W R A on coordinating a bus stop. They suggested that when we have tenants secured and they know the shift schedules, they'll have a more in-depth conversation with us, but at this time, it's too premature.
Thank you. And if you can refresh my memory, there was a talk about providing sidewalks on Clinton Street?
Yes. That will be more discussed at the traffic meeting, but we are proposing sidewalks on the opposite side of the old right-of-way of Clinton Street here. Sorry, this is not probably the best plan, but they're shown along this roadway here. We also, since the last iteration of the plan, added a flashing beacon sign to allow for pedestrians to cross over Route 70 in this area here. But Jeffrey Dirk, our traffic engineer, will do a full in-depth presentation on the March 7th meeting.
Thank you. And my final remark would be a suggestion that if you're going to have sidewalks on the Horton's Market side of Route 70, and you're going to end at the Shrewsbury line, the little town of Boylston already provides sidewalk service down to Dewey Ave, just a few hundred feet away. It would make a lot of sense for some mitigation to connect the sidewalks. Morningdale, the southern part of Boylston, is a fairly working-class area, and I bet you'll have some employees that could walk to their facility.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, sorry. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. My name is Corinne Semino, and I live on Sewell Street, bordering Newton Pond. The first question I have is, will this slide presentation tonight be posted on the town's website?
It will.
Thank you. Just because we have older folks that live in the neighborhood that can't come here this evening, so that'd be great. I'd like to start off by saying that my family has lived here for 30 years. Some of the neighbors have lived here for over 50 years, which says a lot about this neighborhood. It's a quiet, serene area that people come to from all over with their families to enjoy recreational activities on the pond, such as fishing, kayaking, boating, swimming, sailing, and now with winter here, ice skating and ice fishing. We're concerned that the magnitude of these two buildings will change the landscape considerably. Would there be any consideration to having the rear of both of these buildings, meaning at the turnaround areas, be a more environmentally friendly color, such as like a forest green, so that these buildings blend into the natural surroundings?
Could you say the beginning of that statement? Because I missed it.
That's okay. With the magnitude of these two buildings that will change the landscape considerably, would there be any consideration to having the rear at the turnaround sites of both buildings be a more environmentally friendly color, such as forest green, so that these buildings can blend into the natural surroundings?
We can take a look at it.
Last month, if I heard this correctly, it was stated that the warehouse roofs can handle up to one inch of rain per hour. Is that correct?
So what we had said is that the system can accommodate roof runoff. Whether it's one inch or more, the roofs can accommodate even more than that.
Okay.
That's what you're asking, ma'am? I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, just because over the past, you know, few years, it's been common to have, you know, heavy rainfall storms where you're getting two, three inches an hour. And look at the flooding, for example, at what happened in Lemonster last year, you know? So we're just concerned about if there's any possible contaminated water that could overflow into the wetlands of Newton Pond. My next question is about snow removal. I know you touched on it tonight. But based on the 3D video you have online, it looks extremely tight in this industrial pack. And we have major concerns about the contaminated snow being pushed or plowed up against the land at the turnarounds in the back that would eventually melt into the wetlands of Newton Pond. And what I mean by contaminated snow, anything mixed with the sand, salt, brine mixtures, possible oil or diesel gas leaks from the trucks that are on these roadways surrounding the two buildings. And just our concern is, is that it getting into the pond, the town's aquifer, and the water wells? Would there be any concerns about the snow being plowed up against the back? Or is it?
Well, we asked about snow removal and.
What might be helpful? We'll submit a separate plan that'll show the locations of the snow storage areas so that they will be demonstrably within the area that's captured by the stormwater system. And that'll show, I think, better than we'll be able to describe it here, the protection to Newton Pond and the protection of the wetland areas. So we'll prepare that and submit it.
And I might point out, Mr. Chairman, that that was a comment raised by Graves as well, and we'll be working with them. I'm sure they may have some additional recommendations, so.
I was just going to say, the peer review engineer also commented on the snow issue. And I haven't been on this board that long, but I can tell you, snow storage is an issue because not these folks, but people generally like to use as little of that land as possible for snow storage. So it's always an issue, and we will be looking into it.
I will say, I believe the revised plan set address so, snow storage, but as Mark said, we can obviously create a separate plan for that, so it's much easier for the board to review.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
The last question I had is, because Newton Pond's in both Shrewsbury and Boylston, does the Boylston Conservation Commission have to be notified or involved with this project?
So every, every community directly abutting does receive notice of this public hearing process as part of normal requirements. So every, every community directly abutting, the six communities directly abutting, Shrewsbury have all received notice of this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to everyone sitting on the board.
Anyone else? No? Okay. If you have any other questions related to tonight's topic, or any of them really, but if you, if you think of something later and you want to ask the question, you can email, mail, or call the planning department, and that, it'll be directed to the appropriate people. So, okay, our next meeting is March 7th. March 7th, that one is going to be traffic. And because traffic is always so much fun at these hearings, that's going to be the only topic that night, so that's the next schedule. And what, what are we doing after? I forgot.
So after that, we had landscaping and sound, but it's more of a general. So we, at that point, we have hit our typical, the major studies that we do with peer review. And so at that point, we'll, you know, I think sound was one of the ones that was brought up early as a concern of residents. And landscaping, we always, you know, near the tail end, like to take one last review of that. So we certainly can have that a little bit more general. I think, you know, sound and landscaping at that point will be fairly light and move from there.
And I just want to tell you, we heard what you said. I think I could see not just myself writing notes to follow up outside the meeting, so the hearings that'll get input, really not to give you solutions at that point, is to hear what your issues are. And we heard them. I think you had a lot of good concerns, and they come up during these processes, and we'll do our best to get them answered, and we're going to do our best to address them. So the ones that we can do, we will. Whatever is in our control. So I can assure you about the water, that the town government was concerned about this site for as long as I can remember, and I lived in town for a long time. Whether you like this particular project or not, this kind of development where they can control runoff and treat the water, whether it's an office building or this or whatever, is much better than what there's there right now. And if it's done right, I think it will be. I think you see that it is going to be better for the environment and for the wells. And I can tell you, when the gentleman who bought this property was thinking about buying the property, he came and talked to town hall, and he was a selectman and a few of the people on the planning board, and I can tell you that the first thing out of our mouths was water. What you concerned, first one was water. So we do have our eye on it, and we're going to do our best to make sure that we get the best water quality out there that we can. Okay? So I can tell you about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just one more thing to put the folks' mind. It is, I've been in the water industry for 38 years. I live and breathe water, so it's very close to my heart.
Okay.
If I may add one, one comment. As the applicant indicated, they are going to be submitting for the statewide environmental review of this project as draft environmental impact report, and that will be open for anybody to review and comment. So I encourage you folks to look at that, and that will be more comprehensive. All the information will be there. Review that, and if you have some concerns, you can also comment to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And they gather all the comments, and they put together a report for the applicant to address some of those concerns as part of this process.
Okay. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you.
I think you need a motion to continue, Mr. Chair.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing for 142 Clinton Street.
Till March 7.
Till March 7.
At 7:00 PM. Okay, all is in favor? Aye, ayes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your time.
Forgot about that. On the other board, we didn't have to continue very often. You're worth this.
Do you want to give them a second to clear up? Still have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We are not done yet, right?
We're not done yet.
No, we are, we are done. We are done.
But we have to close the meeting.
Could I have a, we don't have any other business. We don't? So could I have a motion to close the hearing?
And make a motion to adjourn.
Can I make a close to meeting?
Motion to close the meeting?
In a second? It will be in one second. It will be. Second? Okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. Voted, this meeting is adjourned. Yes?